Call the October 1st, 2024 Regular Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to to their collective righteousness, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Shireman is absent. Moritz.
Here.
Sherrick.
There.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Before you are amended from the September 17th, 2024 Regular Council Meeting, does anybody have any questions regarding those? Need a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hickman made the motion, Mr. Me seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Granting permission for visitors to speak. Is there an Andy or Tanya Thurman here? They had requested... Is there an Andy or Tanya Thurman here tonight? They had requested to be on the agenda, but I see they're not here. So we will open it up for other visitors to speak.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. Public officials and the people forget that one's opinion is their own opinion, an expression of their own thoughts or impressions of gathering facts and information about something, and expressing it into words or other forms of communication to others. This is a constitutionally protected activity under the First Amendment. With this being said, I believe the Ad Hoc Committee for Rules and Procedures is a farce, and these are my reasons for this. Two hours and 50 minutes at the last meeting, two individuals going back and forth and nothing got done. Matter of fact, after the meeting, the statement was made that it was a waste of time, paying the interim law director $100 an hour plus two city employees on the clock during that meeting. Neither of the other council members didn't have much input on this matter. Even the interim law director was handed some paperwork and stated it was the rest of it. He even went on to say that this has been cut and pasted together over the years. Before one individual was elected to council, that person would come to council and committee meetings and correct their mistakes and even sue the city and got thousands of dollars when the city violated the law. My letter to the editor was brought up and wanted to be addressed during public participation, but was told by the interim law director it was not part of the committee. Well, I'll bring it up during the next regular council meeting. So far... So if you want to address my letter to the editor at the regular council meeting, just remember the rules of procedure. The other individual, who I lost count over a dozen or more times to the podium saying, "I'm sorry," and giggling, and made the comment, "That's not what I wanted." The poststatement that this same person made was, quote, "So many of you are more creative, more experienced, and more intelligent than me and anyone on council. The same individual, under public records, has a CPO against another councilperson and is using the official logo of the Ohio State University Fisher Business College in personal emails to council members." What's up with this? Is this a violation of the college student code of conduct, or is it the college copyright infringement laws? The point is that council rules should be done by council members, and if the members of the public want to make comments during public participation, you have the right to do so, but not during the whole meeting. Do we have a city council, or do we have a citizens' council? It seems that one council member and one citizen are writing the most important part of our elected city government officials' rules for council. Even the interim law director, in my opinion, and I will quote him, "In my opinion, that the current ROP needs reworked. It should be rewritten. However, it is not my decision to make... It is ultimately up to the committee to decide. I can simply offer my opinion on the matter." Why hasn't the committee appointed another council member to this committee? For one who's not showing up, you could do so under your current council rules. Nine months in, no new rules, or any rules of the important issues that need to be addressed. Time and money spent so far, you could have hired someone to write these rules in less than a couple of months. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
My name is Bill Stuckert. I reside at 205 North Spring Street. I want to again express my opposition to marijuana cannabis dispensaries in the city of Bucyrus. Currently, under federal law, under the Controlled Substances Act enacted in 1970, marijuana is classified as a Schedule I Controlled Substance. Although the state of Ohio has banned the recreational use of marijuana, possessing, buying, or selling marijuana remains a federal crime. That may change in the near future, but it is very likely the federal law will only approve marijuana for medical use. If the city of Bucyrus allows the possession, sale, and use of marijuana, it could face grave consequences. For instance, federal government grants might be denied, or possibly federal government loans of zero or low interest might be denied. And you may also be considered as aiding and vetting in the commission of a federal Perspective businesses and industries looking to locate here that would bring much-needed jobs to our community may decide they would not have access to a reliable labor force. Consider the potential loss of much-needed jobs for our community. Dispensaries and growing facilities only provide a few jobs. Larger industries that need a reliable workforce would likely bring hundreds of jobs to our I want to thank Mr. John Skiatyaz on Facebook for his comment, and I quote, "Sure hope you have never drank alcohol, Mr. Stuckert," unquote. Yes, Mr. John Skiatyaz, I do enjoy an occasional alcoholic beverage. I deeply apologize to anyone and everyone whom that might offend. And I thank you, Mr. John Skiatyaz, because your comment caused me to think about that. And I realize during these past weeks of hot summer weather, I consumed as many as three 12-ounce cans of beer in a single week. I definitely need to cut back. I honestly say, though, the cost of my alcoholic consumption is well under $100 per year. So where will the money come from for people to purchase marijuana products? Do you think people will suddenly receive more income to make these purchases? Purchase of marijuana products will likely require the use of a person's income that would otherwise be used for purchase of other products and necessities. People may deprive their children of necessities just to buy marijuana products. Other businesses would be losing some of their sales of their products. The result would be loss of revenue for other businesses, loss of revenue to the city from their income taxes. It was suggested that people from other areas could be attracted to Bucyrus to purchase marijuana products and patronize other businesses while they are here. Let's be realistic about this. Other areas will likely also allow marijuana dispensaries to operate. Unless we have something else to attract people to our community, they will likely just go to dispensaries closest to their home. Three days of Bratwurst Festival just won't be enough. I will say it again, you will likely be disappointed by the amount of revenue the city receives as the result of sales of marijuana products in Bucyrus. Consider the social safety and health impacts to our community. Contrary to belief that marijuana is not addictive, I am sorry to say I have seen firsthand what the effects of marijuana has on a person when not able to access and use it. The particular person I have witnessed gets very violent when that person is not able to get it. I don't know what you call it, but I call that being addicted. The health, safety, and well-being of other people are at stake here. Once again, I urge you to just say no to marijuana sales in Bucyrus. Let's strive to make Bucyrus a clean, safe, and healthy place to live and raise our families. We need to get Bucyrus back to being a productive community, not a drug-dependent community. Thank you.
Karen Miller, 800 Rogers Street. I've got a letter here if someone asks me to read it, which I'm going to do. Dear Bucyrus City Council, I have prepared accurate rules and procedures for a motion to reconsider after significant time to ensuring the proper conduct of council business. I request that Attorney Gilbert confirm this information at the council meeting for accuracy. So what did Kurt do? Council President...
Stop the clock, please. So what did Kurt do? Council President Kurt Van Kauzer sent an email about reconsidering the purchase of a building. The email mentioned a motion to reconsider the purchase, however, it didn't specify the proper procedure for requesting the motion according to City Ordinances, Roberts Rules, Governance, Proceedings. From his news release on Friday, done again without council permission, it also appears that he has rallied three employees, I'm sorry, community petitions. One of those petitions is his own. He also convinced the owners to plead his case, again giving false hope to a couple that should have been promised the purchase of their property with the council's vote. After reviewing Roberts Rules, I have found the following binding information. Roberts Rules defines reconsider as a motion brought back within a limited time and without notice, a motion to be reconsidered. Quote, "The purpose of reconsidering a vote is to permit correction of hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action, or to take into account added information or a changed situation that has developed since the taking of the vote. The motion will be placed in front of the council again, as it was the moment before it was voted on initially. This means the motion must be returned as follows: suspending the rules and voting on it as an emergency regarding the purchase outline. A motion for consideration to put the resolution back as a first reading cannot take place. Therefore, if overturned, it would be passed as an emergency only. A member who voted against the purchase can only make a motion to reconsider. It also confirms that if the member is not present, they are not eligible to make the motion, and it also highlights that the motion only requires a majority vote. Suppose a council member on the prevailing vote moves to reconsider and it's seconded. If the motion to reconsider is adopted, the original vote on the motion at the last meeting is canceled altogether, meaning it would be effective retroactively on 9/17/24. So what are the major concerns about what he did? Mr. Van Kauzer was not authorized to schedule a motion for today's meeting, then without authority released it to the news media. Motions can only be initiated by voting members during council meetings, and in this instance, by someone who opposes the original property purchase. Mr. Van Kauzer's agenda setting is improper and indicates an abuse of authority. The president should remain impartial and not express a personal opinion on the voting body's business. Placing a resolution on the agenda without the council's authority or approval through a vote is unacceptable. This is no different than if he put an ordinance he drafted personally on the agenda for a first reading. These actions are either from an individual who understands the rules and procedures and willfully denies them and purposely abuses his authority, or from an individual who is not fulfilling his duty and understanding regulations and guidelines, cannot properly conduct the parliamentary process, and is therefore incapable of being council president. What steps can the voting council members take? During the council meeting, if there is an objection to reconsidering a resolution on the agenda, a point of order can be raised. Mr. Van Kauzer can correct the mistake and remove the item from the agenda. If the president is unable or unwilling to admit he has made a mistake, he has the right to request an appeal, which requires a second. Debate would be allowed, and when the vote is taken, it would require a two-thirds vote. Alternatively, a member can propose suspending the rules and amending the agenda, removing the reconsideration altogether, but this also needs a two-thirds vote. If the order of business regrettably remains on the agenda, a motion to reconsider can be raised during the meeting. The voting body can follow the steps listed above. Lastly, when a motion to reconsider is made, a council member can ask for a motion to postpone indefinitely, which requires a second and two-thirds vote. This kills the motion and does not allow it to be brought up again. Please understand the seriousness of this issue. This is not simply about the city acquiring the property, but also about the fairness of the process and Mr. Van Kauzer's attempt to influence the council. He did not respect your original decision. Allowing Mr. Van Kauzer to make this decision would set a troubling precedent, potentially undermining your authority with every future decision. By proposing this, he shows he does not respect the council's decision. If you allow him to do this, you allow him to question every decision you make for the rest of your term. Thank you. Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4, Bucyrus, Ohio 4482. Thank you. More public participation.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. As always, I come to you today with concerns. I bring your attention to pressing matter that requires immediate action. It's been speculated as why Mr. Van Kauzer would improperly bring up a motion to consider. This motion has not... He cannot place on the agenda because of our local laws that are bound to Roberts Rules of Order. When we don't specify proper procedure in our ordinances and rules and procedures, it is bound to Roberts Rules. Why would he go to such great lengths to break our laws and abuse his power? Mr. Van Kauzer's timeline is similar to the ones that I previously distributed that you will hear shortly on his letter. We can still hear... We can sit here and hash out the details, but the fact of the matter is, a contract was signed either out of ignorance or under influence of another party that gave the Thurmans the belief that the city was buying the building. An agreement was signed without council authority, and the administration took action outside of executive session. The confidentiality of the executive session had been broken. The details at this point do not matter. They will matter if this ever goes to a court of law. Based on the extreme actions of Mr. Van Kauzer is taking, I'm concerned that he's attempting to cover up the wrongdoings, or the wrongdoings... His wrongdoings or the wrongdoings of others. The potential consequences of his actions, or the individuals who conducted the actions, could be severe. I ask the council to uphold the law. If someone has done something wrong, which from the lack of comment from the interim law director and the new contract the Thurmans had to sign, I'm concerned they felt compelled to sign under duress or under undue influence from the city. If that is the case, no voting member would be responsible here. I ask you to not allow Mr. Van Kauzer to break policy and procedure, which is law, and undermine the decision you have already made. By setting the precedent that it's okay for him to do this today, you're setting the precedent he can do anytime the voting body has taken a voting action and he disagrees with your decision. I also request that the voting body, that if Mr. Van Kauzer attempts to persuade you from his chair, you make a motion of a point of order to prevent him from giving his opinion on what you should or should not do. This is not the role of council president, especially when he is in the chair presiding over the meeting. His responsibility is to maintain impartiality. His job is not to make you complicit in any improper action the administration may or may not have taken. If this results... If this action results in compensatory damages against the city, then I would hope the council would draft a complaint against whomever the individual or individuals responsible for those damages are. Do not enter into a vote under duress. Lastly, this gives me the impression that the council may be extorted into a cover-up. I worry that today's conversation will be change your mind or get sued. That is extortion and abuse of office if that's the case. It appears that the president is unilaterally trying to make you complicit in the administration's mistake and bend the council's will for his benefit. The truth is, straight out of his mouth, this was his idea, and he is willing to take unethical, if not illegal, action to ensure it gets done. It is oppressive. It is not the first time he has gone behind the council's back and made deals with the administration without your knowledge. Lastly, I encourage all of you to use your rights as counsel and utilize the motion of the point of order anytime he tries to give us a personal opinion on a matter that is not procedural. He is not here to tell you what he thinks. He is here to... Only there to maintain order, which he continues to fail to do. We would not be in this situation if he had not given his personal opinion and attempted to persuade you to do what he wants to do. Without an effective leader, you all have to become the leader he is not to hold him accountable. Thank you.
More public participation.
Could you allow the project to plug in two times, or you just get one shot?
No.
No, it is not. I asked you to do that.
More public participation other than Mr. Miller. He burned up his five minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to all of you. Before I tell you who I am and where I live, do any of you recognize me, except for you?
I believe I recognize you, but I don't want to out-speak others.
Okay. My name is Robin Michael. My address is the streets of Bucyrus. I'm homeless. Okay? My address was 3330 Andrews Road. I am the retired commander of the Guardian Angels of Bucyrus. I had a five-minute page that I had written to present to you tonight. I tore it in shreds. And I was going to bring those pieces and show you what this town has become. This is not... This is not the city that me and 14 other people gave our blood, sweat, tears, and family time to unite, to watch it be torn apart within city council, from city council members, and from the public. This isn't what we fought for. We protected all of the businesses and all of the homes. I'm 65 years old. I spent 10 years as a guardian angel in this town, walking the streets, walking the alleys. For what? For what? To watch city council members chide and laugh at another city councilman? What the hell? Excuse my French, but I'm mad. I'm angry, and I'm hurt. And I've got 14 other people behind me that I could have brought in that door tonight, but I didn't think I needed to. This has to stop. Everybody's pointing their fingers at Carolyn. I don't think any of you know what she's really doing. She's keeping the chaos out of this hall. Am I a friend of Carolyn's? I wasn't until all this started. You know how I met Carolyn? She joined the Guardian Angels. Carolyn is mercury. Carolyn is mercury. She left the Guardian Angels to form the Positive Seekers. This has destroyed her. Yeah, she bullied. She's been watching the videos. I've been watching videos over and over and over. Please, please, it has to stop. And it's within the city council to stop it. Clarissa?
Point of order.
You're great, and I love what you're doing.
Point of order. She needs to address the council, don't we?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I love what people are doing, but at the same time, I'm hearing what other people are saying. And let me ask you this. How many of you ward representatives and at-large representatives know the people in your wards? Have you gone door to door? Have you talked to the people that you represent? Do you know what their concerns are? If you want to get re-elected to this council, I would advise you do it, because I bet I know more people in your wards than you do. Everybody's pointing their finger at Carolyn. I could point a few fingers too, but I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm above that. And I'm going to hold our city council above the bull that I've been seeing happening. Carolyn's coming back. But she's not coming back half a person or half a councilman, I promise you that. I promise, because I'm helping Carolyn. I'm bringing her back to the person she should've been. And I'm not going to fail her, and you shouldn't either. Your councilperson should be sitting right there. I don't care who's at the podium. I don't care what's going on out on the streets. That should not interfere with the council. And I should not see council members on Facebook. Thank you for your time.
More public participation. Seeing none, we have communications and petitions. First one.
Mrs. DeShawn. I have a point of order on the communications and petitions.
What is your point of order?
My point of order being that an individual submitted an email to be read at tonight's meeting, submitted it by the proper hour and proper day, and her letter was denied to be placed on the agenda to be read. I don't believe that you have the authority to pick and choose what letters of communication or petitions can or cannot be presented, and so I am asking that this email be read along with the other emails and/or letters that are also on the agenda.
Where in our rules does it say that every single email that is sent?
Our rules of procedure for Bucyrus City Council under C miscellaneous states, all letters of correspondence and/or petitions dealing only with the city government that are submitted to council for presentation must include the name and address of the author in order to be read at a public council meeting. No anonymous letters will be read.
Okay, so I see it says in order to be read, but it doesn't say and shall be read. So that sentence is discretionary, discretionary, and the letter's not going to be read. Moving on, communications and petitions. Our first one is from Mrs. Shireman.
Or should we get ruling on that? Should it be read or should not?
In my opinion, the spirit is that it should be read, but he is correct. That is discretionary.
Can we appeal that?
I believe so, yes.
I would personally like to appeal that decision. It kind of seems like we're picking and choosing who we're hearing from.
I'll second that.
Okay, so that would require a roll call vote.
May I ask a question? Is it yes vote to read it, or a no vote to read it? Just so we're clear.
I believe an appeal would be the opposite, so it would be to read it. So you're appealing a decision to not read it.
My vote is to not read.
Okay.
Now, wait a minute. Your vote is to...
To not read this email.
Okay.
Is that what the appeal was?
Uh, the...
Or is it to read the other ones with this?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Are we talking about Carolyn's email, or are we talking about this letter that Vicki's talking about?
This email that was submitted...
I might have...
...to your office, in which you deny to be placed on the agenda.
That's why...
My apologies.
You're good.
Then my vote is yes to please read.
Okay. Vicki?
Yes.
Carolyn is absent. Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes, to read.
Hickman?
Yes, to read.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a copy of the letter?
I do.
Why don't you be so kind and read it for us, Vicki?
I'll be happy to.
I'm pretty sure it's the same thing Mr. Miller already read, but...
Now, since it's not on the agenda, do you want this to be read last, and we follow the agenda? I think that's the proper way to do it. We read Carolyn's email first.
We'll put it as number five.
Thank you.
That brings us back to Carolyn's letter to be read.
Dear council members and administration, please read at the October 1st city council meeting. I am requesting an exception on the issue of my attendance.
I can agree with you.
As it is apparent that I have filed a CTO on Clarissa Slater, who's still attending As it is apparent that I have filed a CPO on Clarissa Slater, who still attends the council meetings and committee meetings, the reason for my CPO on Clarissa Slater consists of many different areas. Here is a small example. She has named me on a police report stating that I was one of two other people that she has named in the police report that broke into her house. She has participated in creating three groups on Facebook all focused on myself, who by the way, has four sitting current council members in it, along with a gallant dispatch, three city policemen, Dan Wireball, Lisa Allseth, Brittany Wireball, and the minor children of Mr. Wireball, who came to council and harassed me to the point that I was asked to leave the meeting. When it comes to council meetings, this is when Clarissa targets me for a reaction. She posts videos of the council to Facebook when the council president has halted the meeting. She has attacked she has attacked my morals, my family, my competence, my whole existence. She has put me in a spot where a CPO was taken out on my by myself on Clarissa. It was right after that while settling while setting in the hall that Clarissa came to file the same on myself and Elmer Kopp. He is also named as one of one who broke into her house. The third person would be Kurt Fankhauser. I am submitting my formal request exemption on the fact that the CPO I filed with the courts is on the docket for November 4th at 1:30 PM. The reason I stated on the CPO is based on Clarissa Slater harassing me, taunting me, laughing at me, causing disruption in council. This can all be seen in the on the Bussiris City website for council meetings and committee meetings and being witnessed by members of the council and administration. A mob has been created. The reason to tear down Shireman, I am the weakest link. I badly want to come back to my seat at the council table. However, I will not allow myself to be victimized anymore. That is my seat. I was graciously voted into by the citizens who are looking for a change. We, the new council and administration, was that hope. Until the Bratwurst Festival refused to comply with my request, you can go back and watch the meetings from that first visit from Adam Heinlein, as you will see the mob was forming then. It is my opinion as it stands right now, there is no trust within the council, very much divided. The division started with the festival. We had Aaron Sherrick, Kevin Myers, and Zion Hickman pushing the hate council has for the festival, which is so far from the truth. Our main goal was to cut costs within the administration. I am getting off point here because there is so much to tell. It is my feeling, after observing the meeting video at home, I have come to my come to the conclusion that City Council has failed the voters. Please accept my situation and my formal request for an exemption. Respectfully, Carolyn J. Flynn Shireman, Sitting Council at Large.
Next letter is from myself. I will read that to spare Miranda's breath. It's from Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect Street, Bussiris, Ohio, 44820. The letter is addressed to Bussiris City Council, 500 South Sandusky Avenue, Bussiris, Ohio, 44820. Dated September 30th, 2024, re-YMCA property purchase. Dear City Council, I urge the council to reconsider the purchase of the former YMCA building beside the existing fire station. This once-in-a-lifetime opportunity could end up saving the city multiple millions down the road by being able to add on to the existing station and not having to find a new site and build a new station due to overcrowding of the existing station. Since the fire department has taken on the role of now providing EMS services on top of fire services, the apparatus bays are severely cramped to the point where some equipment is being stored elsewhere. This is not ideal for public safety for critical life-saving fire equipment to be stored at other locations. I have attached an article from Danbury Township, which is in Marblehead, Ohio, showing how much a new station cost them that opened in 2022. Their 26,000-square-foot facility cost over 6.2 million, which they got built on pre-pandemic pricing to house a station of six to eight on duty. The existing Bussiris Fire Station is approximately 5,000 square feet on the lower level, with an additional second level being another approximate 5,000 square feet to house to house a station of six on duty right now. Bussiris firefighters are working in a facility that is approximately 38% of the size of what Danbury firefighters are in for a similar-sized duty staffing. This clearly shows how undersized and overcrowded the existing Bussiris Station is for our firefighters. A new fire station at post-pandemic pricing, similar size to Danbury, could be approaching the nine-plus-million-dollar price tag. The citizens of Bussiris could not afford that on top of an estimated 60-plus-million-dollar wastewater plant. We have to be wise stewards of the taxpayer dollar. And utilizing what we have now plus an adjacent property would be exponentially cheaper over the next several decades versus building an entirely new facility. Some naysayers have said that, quote, "Adding on to the existing building would require the existing building to be brought up to code," end quote. I reached out to Richland County Building Department, and they advised me that additions can be put on to older buildings, and the older part of the building would not need to be brought up to current code as long as there is a, quote, firewall, end quote, between the two parts, and a masonry block wall would normally qualify as a firewall. If it does not, then as little as two layers of 5/8 fire-rated drywall is always needed to qualify as a firewall. Yes, it's always nicer to have new, but a new station is highly unfeasible for Bussiris in the next 10 to 20 years. Maybe that would change if we get significantly more industry in Bussiris in upcoming years. But right now, the trend is not going in that direction. Some others have said things like, "How do you expect us to pass an equipment levy when you're, quote, spending $100,000 on a building?" end quote. My answer to that is simple. We are selling two other properties that are not meeting our needs and using the money from that to buy the YMCA property. Also, it must be noted that the looming financial shortages of the city are vastly in the area of wages and salaries, which are reoccurring yearly expenses. Real estate holdings of the city are a fixed asset item that, once they are paid for, are not a reoccurring yearly expense. I do realize that some minimal maintenance does happen on real estate. Also, real estate can potentially be resold down the road, and that money can be recouped and reutilized for other real estate needs of the city in the future. Much like how we are now considering selling other properties right now to acquire this YMCA property. If the city would decide in 20 or 30 years to build a new station, then they could potentially sell the existing station by public bid and recoup its investment in the property then. The failed levy potential argument is an apples-to-oranges comparison, as you would not start selling cities' real estate assets to start paying for wages and salaries and vehicle depreciation because eventually you would run out of real estate to sell. I would argue that acquiring the YMCA property is a signal to the voters of how wise the city is on being forward-thinking with the taxpayers' dime. As the alternative of building a new station would be an irresponsible long-term goal right now. Also, there have been many accusations of deception regarding this property purchase. I want to put on the record that that is absolutely false and driven by a faction of people that want to discredit myself for political gains themselves. If there was deception being done, you would have to say that all of the administration's elected officials were involved in the same because the mayor, law director, and auditor were all making strategic moves to acquire the property. Those are all separately elected positions. It would not be concurring with each other unless unless they believe council's intentions were to acquire the YMCA property. I am also attaching a timeline of events regarding council members' actions to acquire this property dating back first to May 29th, 2024. We are now heading into October. Yes, there was an oversight in the original contract due to an error of previous legal counsel. But don't throw the baby out with the bathwater on what would other words is a very good thing for the city. The Thurlmans have been upstanding business owners for decades, providing a service to the community. They have been strung along long enough over this property sale and deserve this sale to go through. This is not how we should be treating our business owners and the community. Council has the ability to right a wrong tonight, and they absolutely should. Sincerely, Kurt Fankhauser. Next, we have a letter from the fire chief. I'm not going to read over this timeline. It's our stuff. I'm just, my letter was sufficient. We'll just go to the fire chief letter at this point.
To Bussiris City Council, I am writing to express my strong support of the proposal to purchase the old YMCA building next to the fire station. This should this initiative not only provides a strategic opportunity for future expansion, but only but but also represents a smart financial decision that can help reduce the future tax burden on our residents. As our communities as our communities' needs grow, so does the need for an expanded fire station that can accommodate increased demands for public safety. Constructing a new facility would involve significant costs, including land acquisition and higher construction expenses, which would inevitably impact our taxpayers. In contrast, purchasing the YMCA allows us to leverage an existing existing structure, enabling us to expand our fire station efficiently and cost-effectively. The location of the old YMCA is ideal for our fire department's future needs. By adding on to the existing fire station, we can create the necessary space for modern equipment, additional personnel, and improved community services, all without the lengthy process and high costs of starting from scratch. This approach not only maximizes our resources, but also strengthens our emergency response capabilities. Moreover, by choosing this path, we demonstrate a commitment to the responsible fiscal management. This acquisition can help prevent potential tax increases that would accompany a new construction project, providing relief to our residents and allowing funds to be directed toward other essential services and community programs. I urge you to consider the long-term benefits of purchasing the old YMCA building. It is a proactive step toward ensuring our community remains safe, resilient, and financially sound. Thank you for your attention to this important matter. I am confident that your leadership will guide us toward a direction that benefits all residents now and in the future. Sincerely, Chief Chad Schwemle.
Next letter is from Jeremy Gillum, IAFF 1120.
To Bussiris City Council and city residents, as most of you know, there has been a motion to reconsider Resolution 228-2024, which pertains to the city's proposed purchase of the former YMCA building located next to our central fire station. The union has had no stance previously regarding this property, as we have heard both sides regarding the purchasing of said property. With that being said, anyone who has visited the firehouse has seen how tight our equipment is placed on the apparatus floor. This is the same apparatus floor where we do our toy drive every year and do shift training. The building we currently work out of was built in 1905 and housed fire equipment that horses pulled. The fire equipment has evolved through the years, and we have just outgrown the building as the needs of the community and those we serve have also evolved since 1905. As the needs of those we have served throughout the years have evolved and more demands have been placed on the fire department, such as confined space, water rescues, and grain bin rescues, to name a few of the the equipment is needed to perform these tasks takes up a lot of space, and that is not even mentioning the fire and EMS equipment we use daily. The union understands that the city of Bussiris nor its citizens can fund or build a new state-of-the-art multimillion-dollar firehouse that, if done correctly, would last as long as the current building we are housed in. However, purchasing the building next to the firehouse could help with the relocation of certain certain equipment and allow for some additional room for those shift trainings, and would also increase room to get equipment in and out of easier. This would be the cheaper option for both the city and the tax-paying citizens, and would alleviate some of the overcrowding issues inside of the firehouse. Although the union has no final say, and if this property is or is not purchased, we do see a benefit and support the city's proposal to purchase this property and develop it as it sees fit while working side-by-side with Chief Schwemle and the members of the city Bussiris City Fire Department. Thank you for your taking your time and consideration in this matter. Respectfully submitted, Jeremy Gillum, President of the Bussiris City Firefighters, IAFF Local 1120.
Next letter, the one from Mrs. Slater, and I will let Vicky DeShawn read that letter.
First off, the letter is not from Mrs. Slater. The letter is from Angie Rayborn, 218 East Center Street, Bussiris. The past few months have shed a bright spotlight on the unethical and bad behavior coming from some members of council. As a citizen of this town, I demand it stops. I have previously emailed the mayor, Mr. Gernert, and the council president, but not one person took the time to respond to me. My opinion of these issues are this. I believe we have a council member who continues to slander and attack members of the community, and not just by calling names on online platforms, but she also calls individuals employers. I understand that she publicly has stated she is a city council member. From what I have seen, she has also remarked on public pages, like the Support All Miller page, in an attempt to harass the pool manager. I believe this is unacceptable and what I understand as harassment. I believe it has to be stopped. I feel that our esteemed council president lied to everyone in the city when bringing the purchase of the YMCA to the table. From what I understand, he alluded to the idea that he just received information and came up with the idea. Eventually, it happens, we all found out that it was already being planned for two months. It appears that this was not true, may not be legal. Okay, excuse me here. It appears that this was not true. He is just trying to push through his agenda. On the topic of recording conversations, he released himself, though it may not be illegal. I believe it is highly unethical and disgusting behavior. These two members are an embarrassment and do not deserve seats on our town's council, in my opinion. I ask that they step down to stop what I see as the discourse discourse and embarrassment they have created for our town.
So that's the final letter that was submitted. We need a motion to accept and file these letters.
I think we need to vote on them separately.
You want to put that in a motion?
I make a motion that we vote on each one of them separately, as we should have been doing this entire time.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, letter one, the email from Carolyn Shireman dated 9/29/2024. Need a motion to accept and file.
I move to accept and file Carolyn Shireman's letter dated or her email dated 9/29/2024.
Need a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Myers?
No.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Meritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
No.
Hickman?
No.
Me?
No.
Okay, there was two yes votes and four no votes, so that letter will not get accepted and filed. Number two, letter from myself, dated 9/30/2024. Need a letter to accept and file, need a motion to accept and file?
I move to accept and file the letter from Kurt Fankhauser dated 9/30/2024.
Need a second?
I'll make a second again.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Let's do roll.
Let's do roll call on that.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Meritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
No.
Me?
Yes.
We had four yes votes, two no votes, so that letter will be accepted and filed. Next one, number three, letter from the fire chief. Need a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have accepted and filed that letter. Next one, number four, letter from the fire union president. Need a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Hickman made the motion. Ms. Shireman? Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That one is accepted and filed. Next one, number five, which is a letter from Angie Rayborn. Need a motion to accept and file?
Excuse me, it's an email.
We have an email letter from Angie Rayborn. Need a motion to accept and file?
Some moved?
Second.
Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That one is accepted and filed. Moving on, standing committee reports. Plating committee, Mr. Me.
I've been contacted by Mrs. Cruz at 312 Ethel Street. She would like an alley vacated. I'd like to make a motion to have that to plating.
I'll second that.
Mr. Me made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Ponds. Is that legislation going to be ready Thursday for ponds?
It should be, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any questions for plating committee? Seeing none, Public Lands and Buildings Committee, Ms. Sherrick?
I've got nothing other than what's on the table for this evening, so...
Any questions for Public Lands and Buildings Chair? Seeing none, Health and Safety Chair, Mr. DeShawn?
No report at this time.
Any questions for Health and Safety Committee? Seeing none, Finance Committee, Mr. Myers?
No report.
Any questions for the Finance Committee? Seeing none, Economic Development Committee, Mr. Hickman?
The Tourism Advisory Council will hold another meeting on Tuesday, October 8th. I will have an update from what comes out of that meeting during the next council meeting. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Hickman? Seeing none. Service Committee, Mr. Moritz?
I do not have anything at this time.
Any questions for Service Committee? Seeing none. Special Ad-Hoc Committee, that Ms. DeShawn is the chair of?
The Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure for Bussaras City Council, et cetera, met on September 24, '24, and discussed various changes to Proposed Ordinance Number 11-2024 dealing with Bussaras Codified Ordinance Chapters 111 and 113, and the rules of procedure for Bussaras City Council. End of my report.
Any questions for the Special Ad-Hoc Committee Chair? Seeing none, Special Ad-Hoc Committee, Mr. Me?
No report.
Any questions for Mr. Me? Seeing none, Traffic Commission, Mr. Maritruka?
No report.
Any questions for Traffic Commission? Seeing none, need a motion to accept, committee reports collectively?
Some moved?
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Report of city officers, Maritruka?
No report at this time.
Any questions for the mayor? Seeing none, Safety Service Director, report, Mr. Starnes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer to the lands and buildings, public lands and buildings, the change to City Hining Ordinance, Ordinance Number 12009. Administration would like to add regulations for the stand and the ground blinds being that they should be placed at least 100 feet from any walking trail or parking area, and to add to, the blinds and tree stands are to be clearly marked with the owner's name and phone number. The BZA will hold a meeting next Tuesday at 4:00 p.m. in city council chambers. The Bussaras City School Snake Parade will be held on Wednesday, October 9th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. The Civil Service Commission will be holding a meeting at 5:30 p.m. on Wednesday, October 9th, in the council chambers. The Battle of the Badges Chili Cook-Off will be held in All Miller Park from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 12th. The meeting at the Marsh will be held from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Saturday, October 12th, at the Old Pines Reservoir, east of Route 30 on County Road 330. Spooktacular will be held Saturday, October 19th, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Crawford County Fairgrounds. Please contact the mayor's office if you'd like to set up a booth or make any donations. Thank you.
That says 3:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Oh, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. You can probably stay and help clean up if you wish. That's the, that's the 6 to 9.
Any questions for the Service Director?
I have a question. I've had a constituent ask me if there's a possibility that with leaf pickup, if that could be done at the same time when trash pickup is done. In other words, you know, they're never quite sure when the leaves are going to be picked up, and they get them raked out to the curb, thank you. And, you know, they sit there for a while, and then the wind comes or whatever and blows them all over, and then they're back to raking them again, and I have no clue, so I said I would just bring that up to see if that was something to look into, and if it was a possibility.
Ma'am, can I talk to Mr. Dunn about that? And give, get back, and even if it's on the website, if that's...
Sure, that'd be great.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that either.
Thank you.
Other questions for the Service Director?
Would you like a motion to, uh...
Yes, please.
I would make a motion to refer the added regulations for stands and ground blinds to be added into the Public Lands and Buildings Committee.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any final questions for the Service Director? Moving on, Law Director's Report.
I have no report at this time.
Any questions for the Law Director? Seeing none, Auditor's Report. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. As of today, October 1st, 2024, is the first of the month. At the time of writing this, September 30th, 2024, there are no updated reports for September month ends. I did want to mention that in July, the city of Bussaras received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for 2022 from the Government Finance Officers Association. The city of Bussaras's 2023 audit was submitted September 30th, 2024, and I have no referrals at this time. Thank you.
Any questions for the auditor? Seeing none. Did the fire chief want to give a report?
No, just here for any other questions. I've had any.
You want to give us an update on what's going on on East Mansfield?
I think we're too early.
Yeah, I would say we're a little early on that. We've got another, we've got another meeting.
So, we've got a meeting with a Richland County Building Inspector on Thursday, and we're going to proceed from there, so we're just, we're concerned with the facade falling off, and it's had sustained tornado damage, you know, back earlier in the year, and it just looks like there's potential for some stuff that is moving, and we're trying to be a little proactive on trying to get something done before we have a collapse, a partial collapse, or a wall fall down. So, we're just getting another, another inspector's insight on that, and we'll be issuing something shortly.
And just for clarification, that's the Swan?
The old Swan, Swan Building there on East Mansfield.
Just to clarify, the facade, what'd you say? The facade?
Yeah, the facade is, is loose.
It breaks, falling three stories.
Correct. That's what, you know, that's why those barrels have been there since, you know, since the tornado that we had, you know, we had barricades up, and we had the barrels there. And I'm just, I'm getting more concerned that it, it's not, that's not blocked off enough, so, you know, we don't like the block off streets and everything else that's a little preeminent yet, but we're trying to keep an eye on it and see what, if we have to do that or not.
We don't want anybody getting hurt.
Correct.
Thank you for that. Moving on then, motion to accept the city officers' reports.
Some move?
Second.
I think I heard Mr. Moritz first, so Ms. Sherrick, you can be second.
You heard Mr. Hickman first, this was the last voice you heard.
There was Mr. DeShawn. I knew it came from that direction. Mr. Hickman was the first. Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Visitors input regarding reports of standing and special committees and of city officers?
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. So, I guess I just have a question, I guess it would be for Fire Chief Schwimmler, and maybe the law director, but do we know, like, has, I know there was issues like getting in contact with the owners for this Swan Building? What is the procedure if it gets to the point where it's, you're shutting down East Mansfield Street, which is a main thoroughfare? What's the procedure if you have to make an action or tear the building down, or, like, how does that work? Do you guys then take possession of the land? How's that work?
That's something I'm looking into.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other visitor input? Seeing none. We're going to move on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed Ordinance 33-2024, it's the fund creations proposed on September 19th, 2024. Amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 50-2023, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, by the creation of a 2025 Ohio Crime Victims Assist Fund, subparagraph containing a victim advocate category containing a personal services line item, and a materials and supplies line item, further by the creation of a 2025 Victims of Crime Act Fund, subparagraph containing a victim advocate category containing a personal services line item, and finally by the creation of a wastewater plant construction fund, subparagraph containing a sewage disposal category containing a capital outlay line item, also containing a sewers and drains category containing a capital outlay line item, and declaring an emergency. Proposed Ordinance 34-2024, the appropriations proposed on September 19th, 2024. Amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 50-2023, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, by appropriating from unappropriated 2025 Ohio Crime Victims Assist Funds, the sum of $10,590 to the personal services line item within the victim advocate category, within the 2025 Ohio Crime Victims Assist, subparagraph, further appropriating from unappropriated wastewater plant construction funds, the sum of $2,973, sorry, $2,973,009.95. Further appropriating from unappropriated wastewater plant construction funds, the sum of $2,973,952.45 to the capital outlay line item within the solid waste category within the wastewater plant construction, subparagraph, and finally appropriating from unappropriated solid waste management funds, the sum of $1,200 to the contractual services line item within the sewage disposal category within the solid waste management, subparagraph, and declaring an emergency.
Any motion accepted as first reading?
Some move?
Second.
Mr. Hickman made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time? Seeing none, consideration of proposed legislation for the second time?
Proposed Ordinance 32-2024, it's the traffic control map amendment for Pearl Street. Amending the traffic control map and file established by the Sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to provide henceforth for the placement of a stop sign on the southeast corner of Pearl Street and Nevada Road for northbound traffic. Proposed Resolution 229-2024, selling of a North End fire station. A resolution authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bussaras to advertise for bids for the sale of 606 North Sandusky Avenue, Bussaras, Ohio, permanent parcel number 08-0050047.000 and 08-0050048.000. All said parcels being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future, needed for any municipal purposes. Further authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director to set the minimum bid for offeredmented property to be no less than $262,500 and no cents, and to enter into a purchase agreement with the highest and best bidder, and to deliver a quitclaim deed therefore, while reserving the right to reject any and all bids.
Any motion to accept as second readings?
Some move?
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the second time? Seeing none. The 229 Fire Station, North End Property Sale, I just became aware here in the last hour-ish that the section, it says a majority of all members elected there, too. So, I, I, there's something in the Ohio Vice Code, I believe, that this disposition of property requires more than a majority vote, so I'd like to send that back to committee to make sure we're actually doing this property sale properly.
Can it just be corrected if need be for a third reading?
It's something I would have to look into. So, you'd have to give it back to me.
So, do we need a motion to send that back to committee? I'm going to ask for one. Okay, we just won't do the motion then, we'll just talk about it on Thursday. Reconsideration of proposed legislation. We have, I'll let you read it again.
Proposed Resolution 22...
Okay, point of order?
Mr. DeShawn?
I thought it was decided that this should not be on the agenda.
We never decided anything of that nature.
Excuse me, I misspoke.
You want to hear the additional information? Because we can discuss the additional information after the motion and second is made as to why this is being brought back up. Very pertinent information, too.
It's, and I apologize. May I see your paperwork, please? If you'll just spare with me here for a second. It's my understanding in reading paperwork that's been provided to us that this is not an item to be placed on the agenda. It would be similar to if it was new business, and I just said, this is what I would like to do. I would like to make a motion to reconsider. So, that's what you need, I mean, you need to ask if there is a motion to, you know, reconsider. proposed resolution 228-2024.
Do you wanna move it on the agenda to new business?
Yeah, I don't think this is the proper place. Because again, the way you have it, you have it as reconsideration of proposed legislation and its voting. There hasn't even been a motion.
So the way that, so, so, the way...
And I'll defer to-
There has to be a vote to reconsider. And then if that passes, then there's a motion, there's, excuse me, there'd be no talking from the audience. Mr. Miller? So the way it should happen, there should be a motion made and a vote to possibly reconsider, and then if that passes, then there can, that would put it back to where it was, it's basically undoing the last vote that was on the 17th of September, and then somebody could then proceed with making a new motion to potentially adopt.
So I defer to the interim law director, is that how you interpret the procedure, the proper procedure?
That is how I interpret the proper procedure, yes.
So in other words-
Excuse me, excuse me, Vicki, there's more talking in the audience, and we do not need sounds and noises coming from the audience. Okay, you continue.
So then, if I'm understanding correctly, nothing's gonna be done right now. It's not to be, as you have listed on here, reconsideration of proposed legislation. We're gonna wait until-
Correct, I just, I, I didn't, I put the, the reading of the heading on there because it was kinda unclear at that point, I thought it'd just be best to err on the side of caution and have it on there so that the public could hear it again. That, that's why, I mean, it probably didn't need to be on there the way it was on there. But I thought rather than trying to redo a motion and adopt without the public hearing it, I said, we'll just put it on there. I'm sorry if that upset you, Vicki.
Well, no, it doesn't upset me. I'm just wanting to clarify.
Yeah.
No, I'm-
Yeah, it's kinda, this is kinda like never been done, to my knowledge, before. There, there, I didn't have anything to work off of on an agenda and where it should go in the past by looking at other stuff.
So then, just so I understand correctly, this will then come up if a motion is made? That motion would be done under old and unfinished business?
No.
Or under new?
No, it should probably be in a new business if, if it's in any of the old or-
And that's fine, I just need a clarification.
Yeah.
I would have to look into that. I think, my thought is in technicality, it could be whenever somebody wants to make a motion.
I would agree with Mr. Myers, I mean, it... Where it's actually, when at some point somebody decides to make the motion, if a motion is made, is kinda irrelevant, it's not... There's nothing in the Ohio Vice Code that says it has to be certain place.
So then basically you're saying that-
Oh, and, and by the way, so while we're, okay, so the, the way it still stands now, on the September 17th, the motion to waive the second and third reading, which passed, that's a still-standing motion. That doesn't, we don't have to go through that again tonight, that still stands. It's the vote that was done right after that that is what this motion to reconsider would be undoing.
And for the public, clarify what was that motion done?
It was a motion to adopt it as emergency. A motion to adopt the two, yeah, it was emergency, Kevin made it as emergency.
I think what she's asking, if I may, is that the motion that you're asking to possibly ever reconsider was the motion to purchase the property.
The motion to adopt the resolution as emergency.
Which we voted down.
Which was the one that was voted down. Does that clarify it all?
Yes.
And, and so, and we, when somebody makes a motion and somebody seconds it, the floor is actually up for debate at that point. You don't have to immediately go in and have a roll call vote right then and there, like, you could start having debate and discuss it, that's in Robert's Rules of War. We traditionally don't, we traditionally go straight to calling for a roll call, but...
So you're stating then that at any time throughout this meeting, or out, throughout a council meeting, any one of us could say, I move to do this? There's-
To the best of my understanding, yes.
Interim law director?
My understanding of Robert's Rules is that there's a provision in there that you should adhere to the spirit of parliamentary procedure. It should be, in my opinion, under new business.
Thank you.
Do you wanna vote to put it, change the agenda and amend it and move it to new business?
I don't want it moved to anything, it shouldn't be on here, period. It's new and miscellaneous business is just for whatever somebody wants to say. So there should be absolutely no reference on this agenda to reconsideration of proposed resolution 228-2024. It should be stricken from where it is right here, and it's not moved anywhere. And then you just sit and wait and see if under new and miscellaneous business someone chooses to make a motion to reconsider that proposed resolution. And it's my understanding that that motion can only be done by the individuals that voted no against it at the last meeting.
That last part you just said is true.
And those individuals, that would be?
Should be everybody except Mr. Moritz.
Correct, okay.
Now, the seconding of it, I don't think there's any restriction on who can second it. I believe that Mr. Moritz could second it if he wanted to.
Well, you gotta get your motion first, so...
I, I would think that in the spirit of trying to be public and stuff and transparent, it would be wise that somebody would make the motion so that you can potentially open the floor up to debate and hear what the new information is.
That's a point of order, that's an opinion. That's a point of, we're not supposed to be leading it with opinions.
And I make a motion to remove from tonight's agenda, October 1st, 2024, the reference of reconsideration of proposed legislation or proposed resolution 228-2024, dealing with the purchase of property YMCA.
I'll second that.
Mrs. DeShawn made a motion. Mr. Hickman seconded, is there any debate? At this point, I would like to hand the gavel over to Mr. Myers so that I can participate in debate. He is the pro temp, I would like to have debate on this, this motion that Mrs. DeShawn just made.
I'm gonna ask if that's allowed, just before I-
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the chair, if he, if he wants to engage in debate, he would have to turn the gavel over to the pro temp. That's in Robert's Rules.
That is true.
That is true.
May I engage in debate at this moment?
No, no, you can't.
As a public member and-
No, you can't, it's not on agenda.
May I stay here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the R111, Vicki, where it states the order of the business of the meeting, it says in there, this is the suggested order, so there's, there's really no, like, set in stone. The reason it's so suggested is so that it can be tweaked and stuff.
And where does it, excuse me, where does it state in here that it's suggested?
Am I now forbidden from debating?
Yes, you're forbidden.
Oh, I'm sorry?
No, I asked, I had to ask the law director if I'm now forbidden from debating, which I am.
If you want to, if you want to debate, you have to then give the gavel to him, it's like a talking stick.
You're good.
Yep.
I'll let him have his word.
I'm pulling the 111 up right now. Okay, the 111, Order of Business, 111.18, "At all meetings of council and committees, business shall be transacted in a timely manner in the following suggested order." It's suggested.
Thank you.
So then I would argue that it, we really don't need to move it, or we don't need to strike it. I have discretion on the agenda.
Well, we can appeal, can we not?
I'm debating it, there's, there's an actual motion and second on the floor right now.
We have a vote to take once this, once this debate is over.
All right.
Do you have anything else to add to your debate?
No, that's all I'm, that's all I got to-
Mr. Me? Mr. Hickman? Mrs. Sherrick?
No.
Mr. Moritz?
No, I don't.
Mrs. DeShawn?
No.
Okay.
Now you can hand it back, I'm done debating.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor of Vicki's motion to have it stricken? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Well, it's stricken. Okay, moving on, the, all this stuff's referred back to committee. So committee report, except for the 229-2024, or not 229, 228-2024. So committee report on everything but that. And the first one is health and safety.
Health and safety committee is favorable to proposed ordinance number 32-2024, which is amending the traffic control map and file for the placement of a stop sign on the southeast corner of Pearl Street and Nevada Road for the northbound traffic.
Finance committee?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 33-2024, the fund creations, as well as favorable to proposed ordinance 34-2024, the appropriations.
Public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings is favorable to proposed resolution 229-2024, selling of the North End Fire Station.
Oh, I forgot, we sent that back to committee. Okay, further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third reading of ordinance 33-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
And Shireman is absent.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 33-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent, Moritz?
Yes.
Ordinance number 33-2024 is duly adopted. For second and third reading of ordinance 34-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
And Shireman is absent.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 34-2024?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
And Shireman is absent.
Ordinance 34-2024 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business?
If I may, I'd like to move that we annul Mrs. Shireman's excused absence from the August 20th, 2024 meeting. That would be the date that she filed her CPO. It is impertinent to know that she filed the CPO, she has not been granted the CPO. It is not an excuse for absence.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Other old business, Mrs. DeShawn?
I make a motion to remove councilperson Carolyn J. Flynn Shireman from the Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure for Bucyrs City Council, Bucyrs Codified Ordinance Chapter 111, Council, Rules of Council, and Bucyrs Codified Ordinance Chapter 113, ordinances and resolutions.
You second?
Second.
Mrs. DeShawn made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I meant to say aye, I didn't say it, sorry.
Motion passes, other old business, Mrs. DeShawn?
My next motion is to appoint councilperson C. Aaron Sherrick to the Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure for Bucyrs City Council, Bucyrs Codified Ordinance Chapter 111, Council, Rules of Council, and Bucyrs Codified Ordinance Chapter 113, ordinances and resolutions.
Second.
Mrs. DeShawn made the motion, Mr. Myers seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, other old business. No more old business, moving on to new business. Mr. Me?
After talking to the zoning guys, Mike and Landon, we would like to actually rezone the city. The reason we wanna do this is it's old, it was laid over Bucyrs, it's a zoning from another city. We'd like to conform it to Bucyrs, what Bucyrs is. So we'd like to consolidate some of the zonings, R1, R2, R3, AR. I'd like to form an ad hoc committee. I'd like to have five people on it, Vicki DeShawn, Bill Stucker, Mike Keefe, Landon Hill, and me.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. It was DeShawn, Keefe, me, Stucker, who was the other one?
Landon Hill.
Yeah.
So motion is to form an ad hoc committee with, for pertaining to zoning with Mrs. DeShawn, Mr. Keefe, Mr. Me, Mr. Stucker, and Mr. Hill.
Second for Mr. Myers.
Mr. Myers was the second, Mr. Me made the motion, all in favor?
Discussing, point of order. Maybe we have discussion?
Sure.
Just because I'm not sure. Am I allowed to vote since I'm one on the committee? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I wasn't trying to last one, so...
All right, sorry.
So the ad hoc is, it's formed.
You want more discussion?
No, it's formed.
Not yet, I saw you interrupted.
Okay.
I'm gonna re-ask for the-
I didn't know if the vote came out or not.
I'm gonna re-ask for, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
And we'll meet, we'll agree, we'll talk and meet sometime to have a meeting, so...
Any other new business? I will entertain then, if anybody wants to make a motion for the reconsider of the 228-2024, I will ask for a motion. Seeing none. Need a motion to excuse councilmembers who are absent, and Mrs. Shireman is the only one that's absent. one that's absent. With no motion to excuse, we will move on to what are the referrals?
Updates the hunting ordinance to public lands and buildings, and Ethel Street Alley vacation to Platte.
You motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned at 8:30.